A briefing and work session on the Founders Row Special Exception Amendment. That's tentatively scheduled if that's ready to go. They have submitted their application, but we've got some things that we think would be appropriate to get from them prior to really having that formally get started. And a discussion of the Womata Capital Financing Agreement. That would be for your May 18th work session. Potentially then a referral out to boards and commissions of the Mason Row item in action on the Womata Capital Financing Agreement then on May 22nd. The one other thing that's noteworthy on the schedule, the proclamation for Volunteer Week, with the intent is to invite volunteers to that council meeting and have a reception prior to the meeting so that we can celebrate the achievements of our volunteers and their service to the community prior to that meeting. June 8th is when the Insight Project, the Washington Broad Project is scheduled to next come back to the city council for a work session and then potentially for a referral out to boards and commissions on the June 12th meeting. Those are the kind of heavy policy issues over the next couple of weeks, and there are several of them. And our goal is to try to get those started in the beginning of the summer. And a lot of those won't really get, you know, the land development cases might possibly not get back to you after they've been through boards and commissions until the fall when people come back from vacations.
All right. Any questions, comments? Vice Mayor Connell.
Friday, May 19th is Bike to Work Day.
That is right.
But there's also two other meetings at 7:30 and 8 o'clock. I know many council members and city managers like to attend Bike to Work Day. I'm just wondering about that.
You might be biking to work early.
Bike to work really early. For volunteer recognition reception, who are the volunteers that are being invited? Is it members of boards and commissions? Does it go beyond that? Volunteers in the library and...
The tenet is to invite all of our volunteers. So those who have planted trees, those who have done invasive removals, our volunteers in the library, et cetera, et cetera.
So it's lots of people and being invited through lots of different groups?
That's the idea.
Okay. That's good. And then my other question is just the, since we're on a pretty tight turnaround here with a June 19th work session to talk to the school board and then June 26th to do first reading on the school bond ordinance, that doesn't give us a lot of time to sift through all the information that's coming out of these feasibility studies. And I certainly don't want to say, yeah, let's move the referendum away from November. But if we need to, if we decide come June that we are not going to get to put everything on the referendum, put a referendum on by the end of July, when's the earliest time after a November election that we could hold an election, a referendum?
We'd need to probably have that information presented at another meeting. It is my understanding the council can set an election when you choose. So I think you would have some flexibility in that. There might be some minimum amount of time that has to elapse since the last election. So there's some parameters, but generally there'd be some flexibility.
Okay. It would be good to know going into this June decision-making period if we feel like we've gotten so much information and don't want to be rushed to make such a huge decision how much extra time we're adding on automatically. Is it two months? Is it 80 days, whatever?
Why, to make sure I'm understanding the schedule, is July 24th that drop dead date? That's the absolute last date that we have to get the referendum question worded and approved?
It has to be approved by the judge at least 91 days before the election. So that's August, I don't know the exact date, but it's like in the second week of August. And so you can't really control the judge's schedule, so in order to make sure that it happens, the city attorney's advice is that July 24th is the latest date that's really practical. Now, if there's an emergency and it had to be done on a special meeting after that, that's probably feasible. It just gets uncomfortable.
Okay. So anything else? It is approximately 8 o'clock, so if there's nothing else on scheduling, why don't we move on to our first item on the agenda?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. So the first item on the agenda is resolution to grant a special exception for a cottage housing development at the east end of Railroad Avenue. What we'd like to do is allow Ms. Aubrey, our principal planner on this project, provide a staff report first and then hear from the architect for the project who we just met with onsite for the walking tour. Ms. Aubrey.
Good evening, council. Staff is requesting that the council hear a presentation from the applicant on the proposed railroad cottages project and then request the council to place the draft resolution on the May 8th meeting agenda with the intent of referring it out to the boards and commissions that are listed in the staff report. This application will require legislative action by the council for the approval of a special exception and then a mandatory recommendation also from the planning commission. It would then follow, if approved, the standard site plan review process by the planning commission. Couple of months ago, the city approved the cottage housing ordinance, and this is the first application subject to that ordinance. It will be allowed through the special exception process and the ordinance applies to sites that are at least 45,000 square feet in area and in a low, R1A, low-density residential zoning district within 500 feet of a revitalization district. And this ordinance would permit them to construct approximately twice the number of houses, housing units currently allowed in R1A as long as they meet the special exception criteria and the requirements that were developed in the ordinance. Staff has reviewed and provided comments on the first submission, and the applicant has submitted a second submission which is included in the agenda materials along with the comments from staff on the first submission. Getting to the site characteristics, it's about one and a quarter acres in size at the end of Railroad Avenue. And surrounding land uses, as we saw, to the southeast and west include detached single-family houses. To the north of the site is the W&amp;O D Trail, Friends of the Falls Church Homeless Shelter, Fairfax Water Offices, the city's property yard, and a couple vehicle body shop businesses. I'll let the applicant get into the project description in their presentation. The staff report does include some preliminary analysis of the project against the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and the special exception criteria. Right now, it looks like it's generally in compliance with all of those, and we are reviewing the second submission currently. The staff report also includes some of the comments from staff mainly in regards to parking and traffic. The applicant will be doing a transportation demand management plan, and it also includes some comments from the fire marshal regarding improvements that the applicant proposes in terms of improving the fire safety access to the site, as well as some comments from Nova Park regarding some improvements on their land and some agreements necessary that they would like to see. Public comments received as of the planning commission work session a couple of weeks ago are also included in the staff report. In summary, again, staff requests that the draft resolution is placed on the next week's agenda for referral out to boards and commissions, and it's anticipated that those meetings would occur in June mostly, and then we would be back in front of the council in July, mid-July for adoption or decision making. So if there's any questions for me, I'll take them now, or otherwise we can go to the applicant.
Any questions? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and hear from the applicant then? Wilburn, are you going to be doing this? Okay. Here, take your time.
Hi, Dan. This can advance while I go make copies. Okay. Teresa Twyford, hello. Thanks for having us.
Sure. Thanks for coming out.
I have long been passionate about cottage housing, as you know, and have for many years been trying to get this accomplished here in Falls Church City. Our city is in need of middle housing that is between single-family homes and condos and apartments. I live in the brick townhome community at the corner of Park and Pennsylvania Avenue in a wonderful walkable location like Railroad Avenue. The benefits my family has experienced living by, living in a close proximity to 13 other households furthers my belief that Falls Church City needs more of these middle housing options. As townhome neighbors, we are friends, we socialize, and we watch out for each other. Most of my neighbors moved into their townhome after selling their higher maintenance and larger single-family homes. My husband and I are not only the youngest owners among the 14 townhomes, but we are the only ones with kids still in the school system. The townhomes rarely go on the market, but when one does, it gets snatched up immediately, which speaks to the need for more middle housing options. According to the city's own data, a full one-third of the city's households are one-person households. Last year, the United States Surgeon General warned that Americans are facing an epidemic of loneliness and social isolation, citing the fact that they have found that loneliness is more dangerous than obesity and nearly as deadly as smoking. With this in mind, my partners and I are proposing not just to build cottage homes, but to build a community where residents spend time together, take care of each other, and avoid the need to leave the city in search of acceptable downsizing options. This project has the strong support of the father of Pocket Neighborhoods and Seattle architect Ross Chapin. Ross is excited to see this finally taking hold in the DC area, and Falls Church City has the opportunity to be forward-thinking and to set the standard for the rest of the region. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jack Wilburn, Butts Wilburn, here in the city. We're going to do my presentation a little backwards because the sort of planning and talking points I wanted to come through real quick, we'll just do it at the end as a wrap-up. So this is just a brief, I'll keep it very quick. This is very much what we gave to the planning commission at their work session, and it just gives you an overview of some of the pieces and puzzles. As Teresa said, Pocket Neighborhoods are not a new concept, they're just new to Northern Virginia, and you guys are ahead of the curve. As you're well aware, this ordinance went through a lot of vetting, and we're hitting it all out of the ballpark. We are age restricted, we're coordinating the site design, we have significant community amenities, it'll be lead or equal, there's a couple of different strategies on that. We are one and a half stories. As we said at the site, there's 1,000 square feet on the first floor and 400 in the upper floors on all the units, porches, landscape buffers, et cetera. The site, we were just there, you can see how far it goes down to the tip past that storage building for the park authority, and the site plan that we were looking at earlier, which we can leave up and answer questions about later. We've built a 3D model, which I'm still in the process of updating some of the core areas as we worked out with the fire marshal, but substantially this shows the carports, the houses arrayed along the long property line, two or three up here against the railroad, substantial buffers. We're trying to be as accurate as possible, show a 10-year growth with matching the landscape plan as closely as possible. Clocking back down around, houses are substantially lower than any of the new homes. As you can see, a lot of the homes on Ellison are very much what's going on in the city. We're very tall homes being built on small lots next to lower homes. We're still back in the lower house project size. This is the view looking down the walkway across the photovoltaic array on the carport. This is looking the other way, back up towards Fowler, seeing the core center area here. And where we were walking through bushes and trying to look at cones, this is the actual view looking down through the middle of the community. This is one of the floor plans. It indicates that we have a first-floor master, zero-step, all meeting universal access code requirements for bathrooms, roll-in showers, the whole nine yards, a front porch, a little private patio to give everybody two different versions of outdoor space, and then a small 400-square-foot footprint with another bedroom and a bath. This is indicative of the basic massing of this unit, and you can see the mass steps to the rear a little bit. Those are the houses that are up against the W&amp;O D. This is the Whitney, which makes up all the houses that run along the back property line, and it sort of inverts this plan. It has the second floor towards the interior of the cottage project. So in every circumstance, we're stepping any, even our half floors are moved away from the neighborhood towards the W&amp;O D. This is just a slight variation, it's an L shape. We talked about distance between the houses. The main bulk towards the neighborhood is the 20 feet, then it steps in, we get a pinch point here about six and a half feet for a limited, where there's a dining room bay or a kitchen bay that sticks out. This is this model, we've hipped the roofs also. This is the model towards neighbors, so we've hipped the roofs to reduce the mass even further. This is some of the variation that we're working with in terms of giving a limited color palette, but that gives everybody distinction to their own unit. They pick their own color door, their own handrail style, whether or not they have a variation on pediments, but it's a combination of cohesion to the neighborhood, but enough variety for people to identify their own units. Had a lot of discussions with planning staff about that. The cottage amenities are really about building community that's really key to this. It's very much modeled on, I mean, you can call it the cottage concept, but it was also spearheaded by the cohousing communities, of which there are, there's at least one here in Northern Virginia where I live. And amenities here are common house, a carport, all low-maintenance exteriors, residential sprinklers, all geothermal heat pumps, and where they're located. Sort of the common house, community patio, W&amp;O T Trail, obviously is a huge amenity to this project, the zero-step boardwalk, little entry features, a little gazebo or, you know, trellis entry features, which I'll show in a minute. I'm talking really fast just to get it through, okay? This is a floor plate of the common house. This is the same footprint, if you will, as the tenor, and its upper floor is also set to the back away from the community, but this allows for sort of the dinner party for more than the four or six people you would have in your own house if you had family or guests over, or more likely, what happens in my community, a couple of days a week, we get together as a community and some percentage of our neighborhood gets in. So it's not so much that the regular meals are guests, that's usually maybe holidays, but on a day-to-day basis, the idea is to promote getting together so people aren't just sitting at home alone. As Teresa said, 30% of the population in Falls Church is single, and it gets worse as you get older. That's just a fundamental demographic. And so this is trying to promote a place, a third place, if you will, someplace other than the four Ps, maybe. This is in the middle of the community. It's given a little bit more colorful, traditional still, barn red and gray appearance. These are some of the, also, most of these rungs were thrown in front of the ARB to get their first blush. They were very happy to see the attention to detail and the coordination of the design. This gives you some sense of the elevated boardwalk, which I said is, at most, 18 inches above grade, so it doesn't pose any hazards, little handrails coming out from each unit, and then the front porches, sort of beginning of where we have a drop-off, sort of hoping to use part of the fire access as a place to be able to drop off groceries, let's say, to the common house. This is what I mean by sort of an entry feature. Carport, again, we're showing a seven-foot-tall fence, approximately eight feet tall at the lowest point, going up to an eight-foot clearance underneath, so the carport's very discreet, very low. And this starts to show the depth of what we're proposing, taking the 12 feet of existing railroad, giving it its 50% increase in terms of drivable access for fire trucks, and then replanting or relocating the plants that are along that, on the Regional Park Authority This is sort of the latest and greatest, although I think we've actually reduced one of the amount of pavers, but this shows the turnaround for the apparatus that both Falls Church utilize. It's their biggest vehicle, it weighs now, I think, 85,000 pounds. It shows both the wheelbase, but also the bucket overhead to get around, so we're working with the landscape to make sure that there's nothing high right there, so that it's planted, but it's swingable over top of. And the, I'll reiterate this point, but we vetted this with both the Falls Church Fire Marshal Tom Polera, but he brought along both two captains, one from Arlington and one from Fairfax, because there's sort of a quasi overlap of jurisdictions on here, and they wanted to make sure they were all happy with it, and they all approved this unanimously. Again, that's sort of our overview. You were all just giving copies of what I hoped to go on screen. I'll just run through this real quick. As you're aware, from the original comprehensive plan analysis that was done as part of the cottage ordinance, there are a lot of very thoughtful, very key elements here from a planning perspective, and we've welded that together with what we've heard out of the community's key concerns, hoping to get the information out there showing not only to the council and the city at large how we're meeting the objectives in a very clear process, but how a lot of the concerns of the neighborhood is either based on information that is maybe not as accurate as it could be. We've met with the neighbors once, we're committed to meeting with them again at the very minimum and try to get information out there and not rely just on our say-so. We're trying to give as much information that is detailed or easily to validate through engineering analysis and clear math, if you will. Again, I just, we'll run through this real quick, but I think this is all fairly obvious to the council, that the reason this ordinance was written is because it serves a real need. That sort of middle housing stock is missing. There was a recent ULI and a Washington Post article about this gap in this area, and we're meeting that need. We're thrilled to do it. This is something, I'm not Bob, but I know that Bob feels very strongly about this, just as he did when he brought the housing for the school with his project earlier on West Broad, that these are the kind of things that benefit the city, and he feels very passionately about it, as does Teresa as another resident. One clarification. We are able under federal law to mandate as a deed restriction that there will be no children under 18. That's been, we put together a legal opinion, we've given it to both Carly, and I believe she's vetting it to the city attorney for validation. It's not our say-so, it really is a fact of law. So the other component of this is that that is a deed restriction, it is to the residents, not just the owners. Same thing with whoever is living there, at least one of them has to be 55 and over. That is regardless of who owns it, if they're a resident or non-resident, whoever's there living there has to be, meet all the criteria of no children and plus 55. I've tried to put this, frankly, because it's my job, is to try to put this as how this project benefits the community. And one of the ideas is that we can be better or neutral. We hope to be better in every respect. Traffic is a pretty big item, that's a very narrow road, it has a lot of issues in terms of people passing now, just as you saw when you drove up Fowler, any, there's streets all throughout the city that have the same sort of two-way traffic problem when those cars are narrow things, people have to maneuver. What we did is we submitted an IT calculation clarifying that four By Right houses have the same, virtually the same number of trips as the cottages based on their empirical process. Parking. As you know, the parking for the ordinance was hashed over in great detail, and we are meeting the ordinance, but we also have been doing a lot of research on industry and focus group, the expected need, the people who are actually interested in moving here, what is their dynamic, they are at least 30% single households, and a number of them are extremely interested if we can provide a traffic demand management such that they can get rid of a car. It's a huge cost benefit to them, and they see a lot of advantages. So we have an enlightened self-interest to not only meet the ordinance, but also make sure that we're providing a viable, commercially viable project to the community of people who want to live in it. We've in fact met with, I forget which group within the city for examining traffic demand management strategies, got some good ideas and are working very hard to put that together. Density. In staff's own comprehensive plan analysis and our staff report, it makes it very clear that the cottage ordinance is meant to be density and volume neutral, and we certainly meet that criteria. The volume of these 10 cottages is the same, if not less, than four houses on the site. We are in fact going to be significantly shorter since we're held to a higher standard, or, sorry, a lower standard of height. And to give a feel for, this is very similar, we're about 10% smaller than, I think it was Greenway Downs, but with smaller house footprints, just to put it as a visual for a built project in the city. So we will be smaller and certainly no denser than By Right. Stormwater management and landscaping, we touched on this onsite, we are held to a significantly higher standard. We will contribute little to no runoff and are working very diligently with adjacent neighbors who have an existing problem to see if we can actually go further and actually help and solve those problems. So we will have fewer stormwater issues than By Right, and we'll have significantly more trees than By Right development. And that's another way in which we're better than By Right. Sound and light pollution, since there were a lot of questions about noise, I didn't quite know how to answer the neighbors, other than to say that the noise ordinance covers the cottages just like it does for anybody else in terms of barking dogs or movement of trash or anything after hours. We have a big advantage is that this project will be 100% geothermal, so that we won't have all the big whirring units outside everybody's houses. It makes a significant sound benefit. I live in a neighborhood right now that has that. I walk next door to my other neighborhood and I keep wondering what all the, you know, what animal's making that whirring noise. We're also able to enforce as a condo project that we will all be dark sky compliant, so there will be zero light bleed off of our side of any lighting. So we will be, we will actually be quieter and less intrusive than By Right development, and certainly safer than the current conditions. Sustainability. I like to say this is like social capital and physical capital. The first level of sustainability is building a community that promotes and engages people. It's a little bit like LEED strategies, you have to train the people who are going to use the facility to use it, otherwise they undermine the utility of the green actions. In addition, the ordinance requires a LEED silver. We're very excited about that because we think that there are two or three ways to achieve that, one of which, by the way, is a program called the DOE Zero Energy, which would dovetail very nicely into the Solarise Virginia concept. The idea is you build a house so efficient that it could essentially come off the grid by using solar power, alternative energy. Again, all permeable pavers, there's no asphalt on this site, and we're working to use all native species, the PV array, this will be a state-of-the-art community. Last but not least, public safety. The current access is subpar, all the houses there are at risk, the fire marshal loses a lot of sleep over this, and lost even more sleep after he brought the other two fire marshals with him, and they're thrilled to have us bring it up to code, bring it up to the 18-feet wide, give them a full turnaround at the rear that they've completely organized, make sure we're using the latest truck size, et cetera, et cetera. In addition, he's a big believer in the cementitious siding, so it's non-flammable on the outside. We are also putting in sprinklers, there'll be a new fire hydrant. We're going as far as putting an emergency access light on every unit so that if one of the houses, sprinklers goes off, there's a, not an audible, but a visual indicator so they know which house to go to immediately, as well as an emergency button in the house for residents to be able, if they've called 911 and they need an ambulance, they can come to the community, get to the turnaround, they know exactly which house to go to. So that was the pretty pictures, the vision of the dream, and the basic planning, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Why don't we go on to questions and comments? Folks have, of course, Vice Mayor Connell.
Thank you for that presentation. As you're talking about the By Right housing, all your paper says four.
Yes.
And the paper that the neighbors handed out says that it, by right, it is three houses. Can you just explain that difference?
I defer that to staff.
Ms. Aubrey? Because I think that...
There's three existing law...
There's three existing lots there now. There is enough land to do technically five, although with the configuration, there's possibility to do up to four. There hasn't been a sketch of that of what that would look like, but it could be that...
I can certainly provide one to the county council.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I guess the question is, there may be enough area, but then if you have a lot that's so narrow you can't put a house on it, it really is not a buildable lot.
We have the advantage of a large length. I actually have a concept plan, I haven't vetted with engineering yet, but it shows the first three lots at 75 feet wide, which is the ordinance standard for full lots, allows us to put at 75 feet with the setbacks, I get a normal sized house, I don't exceed the 2,800 square feet of lot coverage as footprint, as you are well aware, and one of the reasons the ordinance was written was to encourage people to do something other than taking 2,500 square feet and going one, two, three stories and making these really tall infill houses. And so we get three, no problem, and the fourth one takes over the rest of the triangle and still has access to the paved area. So we've done our due diligence to make sure that there's an exit strategy because that's the only way that it would ever work. It's also not what interests the partners in any way, shape or form. It might have been a simpler, safer choice, but it wasn't what was going to be of interest to the people involved.
It's just important for the comparison to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, that'd be great. If you could go ahead and, if it's not too much work for you, I think it'd be interesting to say.
One of the questions somebody asked on the tour earlier was about the trash pickup?
Yes.
Do they get, and you showed us on the tour where the trash would be. Would this community have regular Falls Church trash pickup?
Far as I understand it, yes.
Yes.
That's the intent, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, so it's right back in here, the drawing is one step back, what was submitted to the city shows the two little enclosures right back here off the setback at the tip of the parking lot. And it's, again, it's not the big heavy metal dumpsters, it's just the regular 96 gallon residential.
But so somebody from the community would have to drag the trash up to the driveway? So it wouldn't be a private contractor doing the trash?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I don't think the city, the city wouldn't come in there to the back of the carports, right? You guys would be taking them out to the street front.
Out to Railroad Avenue.
Mr. Shields, Gina?
That's correct. We would not be going house to house.
Well, or not even house to house, but going to a collection point and taking all the dumpsters from the back of the carport?
Yeah, we might need to, I don't know right off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, what's just something for more thought?
I also understood from the walking tour, there weren't going to be dumpsters, they were just going to be the normal garbage, it's like four of them, like four recycling, four garbage, like we have in our houses. Okay.
It's not like an actual dumpster.
And as far as the residency goes, would residents be able to rent out their space? If they're an owner of one of these buildings, would you be able to rent it to someone else? And then with the same covenant, rules apply to renters?
Covenants lie with the land and it is clearly, the federal law is very clear, it's the residents, whoever lives there has to meet the criteria, both no children and at least one of the residents has to be more than 55.
Okay. So they would be allowed to rent it out, but they would only be allowed to rent it out if those people met those criteria?
Correct.
And what about grandchildren? Could grandchildren come and visit for a short time?
Like anybody else, people come, I guess this is very similar to the Airbnb kind of rule. And you know, state law and local law is very clear, anything more than 30 days, you're now resident and anything less than that is a guest.
So that would follow with the covenant?
As far as I understand, that's how the ordinance gets enforced.
Okay. And is there any opportunity to put solar on the homes?
Yes, we have some ability to do that. One of the things that we were looking at is by hipping this front part to try to reduce the visual mass, we actually lose some area, but these out here are very optimized because that is almost due south, as well as the back half of all of these.
Okay. And do you have any concerns about the house at the very end of the triangle? How far of a walk is that from the carport? Are there any other parking places?
We're trying to set up so that we can, we can double duty the idea of having a drop off here, not, we can't put parking in the front setback, but the idea is that we would take part of the fire access and just outside of the swing point is basically put a drop off right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and the walking tour. So I spent some time reading through the citizen comments and the petition comments and so I wanted to make sure I run through them to make sure I understand where there's inaccuracies or just make sure that we're confirming my understanding. So in the petition and some of the comments, I heard concerns that this was going to be 11 homes and in my understanding it's 11 buildings, 10 homes with one kind of community room.
Correct.
Okay. The second concern I heard is really around fire access and we talked a bit about that when we were doing the tour. I understand that all the units will have sprinkler systems. Could you talk a bit more about what you're planning to do to improve Railroad Avenue?
Railroad Avenue is currently 12 feet of semi-improved asphalt, if you will, and in working with both the Regional Park Authority as well as the fire marshal, we're putting an additional six feet of drivable grass in visible paves, so it looks just like grass, but it has the capacity to hold the weight. In addition, the fire marshal will be pleased to have us put parking, no parking fire lane all the way down, which gives an additional enforcement power to both the fire department and the police department, as well as the park authority is very happy to allow us to do something that's non, that's not pervious, or impervious, sorry, it's permeable. Water goes through it, so we're not adding to any water problems.
Stormwater, while we're talking about water, can we talk a bit more about what the improvements are going to be there?
Yeah, let me get Antonette to answer because, you know, I'm an architect and she doesn't trust me to answer technical engineering questions. Here, you want to use that one? How can I make that go back one? There you go.
I actually have a little colorful schematic that I just brought with me just in case, sorry, it's not part of the presentation, to demonstrate what we're doing with the stormwater. So as Jack has mentioned, all of the vehicular area and as were required is going to be permeable pavement, as well as the patio that's going to be posed for the amenity space. And then the homes that you can see highlighted in green here go to an infiltration trench that is beneath the vehicular area of the permeable pavement. And we've done infiltration testing on the site to confirm that it works. And then the carport roof will be piped to a bioretention basin in this corner of the site. And these remaining roofs highlighted in orange are going to be piped to a bioretention basin that is on the eastern portion of the site. And then beneath the vehicular driveway and this rain garden, there's also going to be additional storage of gravel to hold the tenure runoff until it can actually infiltrate into the ground instead of leaving the site.
Can Ms. Aubrey assume that all of that meets or exceeds whatever requirements we have?
Public Works is reviewing, they did have some comments and like I said, the second submission is under review, they've addressed some of those, so that's...
Okay. Let me run through the rest of my list, thank you.
Also exceeds what is required by right.
Another concern I read on the petition was there's only going to be six feet between the houses. I think I heard that it was six feet at the narrowest point, but the, where the houses are the closest facing the neighborhood, it was 20 feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And what is standard, I guess, between houses? What's our ordinance say?
Side setbacks are 15 feet, rear setbacks are 20 feet, so that, or 40 feet, so that would be the, where they would be adjacent to another property. Front yard setbacks are 30.
Okay.
That's for the by right development.
Okay. Parking, so I know we normally require one spot per house, I think there's 13 if I counted correctly from the plans.
Correct.
So the three would be guest parking designated?
Correct.
And what if people have more cars than that? What do we do?
Well, when people have a very large party or event, they're going to find street parking because it's public street parking.
Just not on railroad?
Not on railroad, won't be able to do on railroad. When we had everybody, you know, at the site right now, there was overflow parking on Fowler and Ellison, that's, any large event, that's what happens.
Two more questions and then I'll let someone else have the mic. So I did also spend some time reading the Housing for Older Persons Act, which I think is what allows us to be age restricted. So I understand that with the 55 and up age restriction, 80% of the units have to be 18 and up. How does that compare to the 100%, I guess, that you guys were proposing?
18 and under.
Or had to be over 18 years old, is what officially the Housing for Older Persons Act says?
Because we're allowed, I defer to the attorneys that we've had vet this, but we're given to understand that under that act, we're actually allowed to put a covenant, a deed restriction on the land that is tighter and to say that no one under 18 can live onsite, so there's nobody in the schools and that at least one resident has to be over 55.
In terms of enforcement, is there going to be a HOA that kind of...
There's a, this will not be an HOA, it will be a condo association, which does give a greater strength to enforcement, if you will. It's also predominantly because it also allows us to have a condo association to maintain all the exteriors.
So much like, I guess, the rental question, so in the case of death or sale, that covenant runs with the land, so that would be...
Impermanent. It's the same, I mean, ultimately the same enforcement of zoning ordinance as anywhere else in the city, that somebody can't rent to 12 different unrelated people or any other. At the ultimate, we have an extra layer of protection more than what the zoning ordinance already provides.
Okay. Two more questions, I think these are for staff. I saw that there was a fiscal impact in the staff report. Do we have a comparison to what the by right for single-family houses would be?
They did provide one in the staff report. They were estimating around 22,000.
Would be for four single-family houses? Okay.
I think we should note that we haven't done a fiscal impact analysis, so this is the applicant's run of it.
Okay.
Our model is really geared for something with, you know, more units so that the analysis is spread over a larger project. So we have not thought that we would run the fiscal impact model for a project like this. We could discuss it a little bit further, but that's been our assessment so far.
Okay. Since we've been talking about some comparisons of what would happen by right, it seems like it'd be helpful to have if it's not too much work for staff to do. Last question.
It's not so much a question of work, it's easy work, it's a question of whether the work product means anything. So for, to do a fiscal impact model for four houses, it could be a negative number, it could be a positive number, the swing is just so wide because the set of data is so small.
Okay. VC, so given that this is a special exception, do we expect that we'll get voluntary concessions as well and do they, will they meet the standard list of things we have or will they pick and choose?
There is a draft in the submission too. We are working with them to maybe do some additional items, but that is something that's ongoing that we would expect.
So one of the things I'm curious about is whether there'll be any VCs around affordability, given that's one of the ones that we've asked for generally with other big special exceptions. This one obviously is a very different project.
There is one in the draft regarding a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund and that's in negotiations with the housing staff.
Great. Thank you for entertaining all my questions.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Dave?
Thank you very much. Again, I'm reviewing through the sheet and I think a number of the key questions have been asked and answered, but I would ask that the developer give us a question by question response in writing before this comes before us again on each of these. I noticed the fiscal impact is something that comes up repeatedly and I think we need, I think as Councilmember Hardy asked, and I would ask the city to do some sort of a fiscal impact on this because a lot of the argument pro and con relates to fiscal impact and I think we need to figure out better what that is. So a couple of other questions. I never try to approve a project with details that I wouldn't want to live with if it were next to me. So the question recurs to me about the carport and all that. I think if I were living next to that, I wouldn't be too pleased with the proposal. So I might want to ask you to look at options for where you can deal with that because I, I think there might be some serious questions about, about that. The other question I have would be the number of units. Is it possible to rearrange things and still have some additional units, but not as many as you've got there? Finally, I notice a proposed comment at the bottom of one of your slides, I think it's your slide four, where you say, "Result: Proposed homes on Railway Avenue will be smaller and no denser than by right." What do you mean by that? How are you defining density here?
Well, by two measures. One is the total amount of lot coverage. We are bound by code and ordinance to be checked by staff and everybody else that we are not exceeding the same measure of lot coverage and permeable surfaces as a by right development. So the idea that we have to meet, I think it's 25% lot coverage and more than 35% impervious. By that measure, we're the same. I think there was a fairly detailed analysis done during the comprehensive plan analysis by staff going through a like-kind development for the footprint available by coverage and the amount of square footage that is commonly seen in all new development within the city. I think they were a little conservative, but we're basing it on that math. They had a total volume of by right and we're less than that. Significantly, the one that's absolutely clearest is you're allowed to build to 35 feet to the midpoint of a roof by right under the ordinance, existing zoning, and we're limited to 25 feet, which we are well within.
So you're using the term, I'm just trying to figure out, when the term density is used, what are you really referring to? So you're really referring there to volume?
And coverage.
Right.
And height.
Okay. So the coverage is the same, are you saying that the permeable, let's do it the other way, the tree canopy, the impervious coverage surface, all those things are no more than you would have if you developed those three lots as single-family houses? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. With the exception that the tree canopy will actually be greater because we have to provide more onsite buffer planning than is required by right.
Okay. I mean, when I'm looking at the picture, when I'm looking at the picture, it's kind of hard for me to come out with that same conclusion. I just, I just don't know. I'm looking at a lot of coverage in the area if you include the carport and everything else, and yet you're saying that you're having no more impermeable surface than you would if you had three single-family houses there.
Four single, four, four single-family.
Four single-family houses, built out to the maximum square footage permitted by the existing code.
Correct.
Right.
Can I make a couple of clarifications? Because they're using pervious pavers, they do get a 25% credit towards the impervious surface calculations. And then the cottage housing ordinance allowed up to 5% increase in the building coverage footprint if they use that, any extra square footage for solar or green roofs. And so they are proposing like 26% building coverage with that extra 1% being used at least for solar.
Twenty, so I'm just trying to get a common set of numbers. So we're talking about 26% building coverage. What would you have with four single-family homes? Or I guess three, and there's a real discussion as to what we're comparing this to. I'm just trying to figure out.
Five would have to have a max of 25%.
Okay.
And so even if this four, if they were to able to carve this up into four lots with that same acreage, that 25% still comes out to the same figure because you're talking about the same piece of land.
Right.
So, but with this, they will get a little...
I actually followed that, thank you.
So they will get a little bump in the maximum building footprint coverage per the cottage housing ordinance, as long as they're doing solar or green roofs. The max, the impervious coverage is the same at 35.
Okay.
And the commercial's 30% if you use by right, non-residential use.
Okay. Other uses, like church or something? Other uses, like church or something could go down to thirty or up to thirty for building.
The only other thing that I often get this back and forth with planning staff and jurisdictions is the difference between density and intensity. So the other measure of density in some, by some definitions, is number of people. And this also allows us to essentially be neutral or by staff's own calculations and ours, that we will be the same or fewer people on site.
So tell me a little bit about that. So you're estimating, what's the maximum occupancy for each of these units? Two, three?
Well, I mean, by ordinance, you can rent to eight, you know, undifferented people in any unit in the city. So I don't quite know how to answer it. Our target people, everyone who has been interested in purchasing this are childless couples or single people. So, that's what we're basing our math on is the people that we actually have engaged have shown remarkably strong interest. I think we're up to like sixty-three names for people who are very interested. So, at that point, we're using the number of occupants that we predict based on our own empirical evidence as well as other senior homes within the state as to how many people typically live here. So what we're looking at is if we're looking at ten units, you're looking thirty percent single. So that's seventeen people?
So, the Seattle architect that's done several hundred of these, his number one demographic purchaser are single women. That's just, that's who's drawn to these. So we're basing it both on just the focus groups of people that have expressed interest and we've held a couple of focus groups, the list of interested purchasers, but then also looking at, I've called every listing agent of new construction homes that have sold in Falls Church City over the past year to get a sense for what, who was moving in there. And it's across the board, you know, young families with two kids. In a couple of circumstances, the wife was pregnant, you know. So that's, that's, I think, the best anyone, the closest anyone's going to be able to come to really getting a feel for what the people density will be.
So under that, if you had three, it would be twelve people.
Four. We're basing everything off four. And we'll get you that engineering to show by right.
All I'm trying to do is if we're doing these comparisons, I'm trying to, you know, in all cases, get what we're comparing against and then get that in fact documented as, you know, realistic.
Absolutely.
You know, comparison on both sides. So theoretically then you'd have roughly sixteen people in four single-family houses with potential for eight schoolkids versus seventeen here, your estimate, and no schoolkids. Is that, is that a?
That's a safe summary. As far as we understand the data, which we'll happen to provide, what we're basing it on.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, well refinement of these sorts of things is very important because I think you're arguing a certain way, those who are opposing it arguing a certain way, and I think we need to try to get a common set of data so that everybody can, you know, participate if at all possible from the same set of data. So is there any chance of moving the carport around or dealing with that in some way? Again, it's sort of odd because generally speaking in these development projects, you try to move intensive, car-intensive stuff away from surrounding houses and yet it all seems to be jammed up against, I mean, and honestly, the visitation to the site really showed it, that it's all jammed up in that one area right next to another house. So ordinarily, when we try to do these developments, we try to do it the reverse. So, why, for example, didn't you put one or one or two of the units there and deal with the parking in some other way? I know you'll get that question, so.
We have a very challenging, we've had this question, we've had it of ourselves. Part of what the ordinance contemplated and is very much supported by good urban design principles is that you want cars at the perimeter and people in the middle. Given the geometry of this site, there's almost no way to put parking any other place and still have people in the middle. So, we are also constrained as to what can go in the front yard setback. You can't go as close to the front yard as the ordinance contemplates now. You can go forty feet away from the street, but fifteen on your side. We're constrained to twenty feet in the front and ten feet on the side. So, the basis of our reasoning and how we've played with this in multiple variations is that if you take that the overriding principle is that you want to make it a place for people, for this community, you put the people in the middle and the cars at the perimeter. It comes with a downside, some of the units are quite a walk.
Unless you're living next to the perimeter and then it doesn't serve you so well.
And then what we're doing there is that we're providing significant buffer. We're putting the seven-foot fence, the two-foot extension. We're keeping the carport well below what ordinance would allow us to do and dropping it as low as humanly possible.
Could you, for example, put at least some, if not all, the parking at the extreme other end of the project?
We do not have access to that legally through the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority land. And it would not allow us to go into the rear yard setback either. So we can't get there from here.
Are you done, Mr. Snyder?
I am, thanks. I appreciate the, I appreciate the comments from the neighborhood and I appreciate your comments. This helps me understand the project a lot better.
Mr. Z?
Well, I really appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Snyder, redesigning this project even as we talk. It's fascinating to observe, actually. I have to say that I've been to that site quite a few times. The last two, I went with the ESC, the Environmental Sustainability Committee Council, and the Tree Commission. And there were, there were other people that came along for the tour, the landscape architects and others. We looked at the issue of plantings, what could remain, what could be taken down. We had the city's environmental coordinator and the arborist there as well. So, I think that their concerns, much like ours here, were addressed. Perhaps we had more time to do that because there wasn't this gale looming overhead. So, and perhaps if you had spent the three hours that we did, you might have had your questions answered as well. There's lots to like about this project. I think that they paid attention to the things that matter to their target demographic and to the neighbors. You certainly don't, I mean, on a summer day here, you can drive down the street and just stop, turn off the motor and you hear the roar of air conditioners up and down the street and that's basically all you hear, it drowns out even the sound of birds. I don't think we get that here. I'm somewhat unmoved by the petition of the people that signed. Many of them are not even from here. And I don't even know whether the people who signed this Falls Church actually live here or not or whether they just say they lived here but don't. Those that didn't bother putting in their last name or even a name at all just goes to the caliber of this online petition. So, I think these questions haven't answered, even though I think that it's prudent to answer them again addressing these specific key concerns. I think there has to be a lash between the concerns expressed and how we address it. So, I am, I think that when the city does its fiscal impact analysis, the single-family house is based on information provided by the school. Comes to three-point-two kids per single-family house. So, there's just no way that you can compare that contribution over the four houses to what this will bring us in terms of a school fiscal impact. Having said that, I think that probably the most important thing here is that is that we decide for ourselves whether this is a benefit to the city or not. And I think that's really the question at hand. I think it's a well-designed project. I'm really happy that they, the company that has been put together is working diligently toward giving us a product that we can be happy with. And so that's kind of it. I think at the end of all this, are we looking for reasons not to move this to first reading? Or should we just go ahead and do that? I think the, the questions haven't by and large answered. Maybe it's just a difference in formatting. And I think that they'll accommodate that. I'm, I do wish the architect would stick to the stuff here and not talk about different concepts of density and so on. I, that takes us to a point where I'm just trying to catch up with him. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions, Ms. Oliver?
So you've mentioned that this is going to be a condo association. Do you have draft condo association documents? I'm wondering whether some of the items that you have laid out here would be addressed in those documents. For example, you know, restrictions on plantings, restriction on lights, restriction on parking. I know that that's a common thing that exists in a condo document and there's provisions for changing that. Obviously, it's not as strict as the, as a deed restriction. But I'm just wondering whether you've gotten as far along as sort of developing some sense of that. So I think it would be helpful for us to know what you're able to do in a condo document as well.
We're currently working with Walsh and Kuluchi and I believe the current bylaws are like sixty-three pages long and because they're so very detailed and we're sorting through with them, I mean, very detailed, what can we pull out and put in the bylaws so the residents have some control down the road over if they want to vote to, you know, change the pediment on the front or, you know, something like that. But very detailed condo docs. And the other thing I wanted to mention about the deed restriction and the age, that is something federally that needs to be recertified on a regular basis. Whether that is done by the condo president and the board or by an outside firm that manages condos, that's, we have yet to figure that out. But that is something that will not only have oversight by Falls Church City, but federally. It's, they take it very seriously, so.
I mean, I'm generally pleased with your attempts to answer the questions that have been generated and I, you know, the points that you've made have all been very solid. And just because I understand what an HOA or a condo can or can't do, I'm just curious whether you've laid out some of the items you've mentioned. I mean, you know, if you're just going to require that you can't plant anything except a native species, can you, you know, can you do that and would that be in the document? You know, things that you've stated as fact here, some of them I do understand people could go ahead and do something else.
We're trying to strike, we're still in the process of developing that, but we're trying to strike a balance between giving them some control and flexibility down the road, but not so much that you lose the look and the feel of this as a whole, that there needs to be some continuity, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Just a question on stormwater. I don't know if that's Antoinette.
Well, it's going to be Antoinette.
Yeah.
Who flew in from Nashville just to get here.
Just to talk about stormwater. Thank you. So, basically, right now, there's no stormwater improvements at all on that property. Correct. And so what the neighbors are, someone mentioned stormwater rolling back towards Ellison Street. So all that is just sort of the natural, unfixed-up state.
Yes. And as I understand it, and I haven't been out there when it's been stormy to really see the flow of the water, but my understanding is there is some runoff concerns west of our site. And I haven't directly heard and I don't know if it's, you know.
Is that on the other side of the trail?
To the, so the way, looking at the picture on the left side of the page. So the way the site is graded, it comes off of the trail and through the property and then continues south. So our property does run off south. But from what I've heard, the storm runoff issues are coming from the left side of us, which is right. And so, I haven't spoken directly with any of the neighbors, but that's just what I've heard from both the city public works because I know they're trying to alleviate some issues that are on the west side of the property.
So when, most of the properties on Railroad Avenue are relatively new. When they were built, did they have to meet the city's stormwater runoff? Or was that before we had stronger stormwater rules?
Some of them might have. I don't know.
No, I can answer, I can answer that question since we just had the briefing at this at the last ESC. The way the city ordinance is written, you cannot contribute any more water than you currently contribute, which is why the in-site development, when it comes before us, part of what we're going to ask them for is to put this vault to hold the water. Otherwise, by right, they can just run off all the water that comes on there now. So, what was just explained here with regard to stormwater is their plan to retain the water that's generated by the site and offtake the runoff from the trail. And I thought I heard mentioned that they would consider working with the neighbors to take that contribution.
Right, so that was my question is.
Right. And so that occurs and they would have to probably size their stormwater retention structure to accommodate all that.
Right. So there was a possibility of working with the neighbors on the Ellison Street side?
Yeah, so we're trying to work with the neighbors so there isn't any public storm sewer adjacent to our property. So the closest storm sewer is on Ellison. So we would need to get permission to pipe into their storm sewer to try to alleviate some of the overflow runoff or additional runoff. And I know Public Works is also interested in seeing if there is any potential to use that connection to help alleviate some of the other issues that are already occurring, not from our property.
So there's potential benefit to other adjoining properties whose stormwater is not going where it really needs to go?
Correct.
Okay. So can you just give us an update on how that is progressing so that, and how the, what the neighbors are thinking of how that's going?
Yep. And I don't know specifically about the single-family homes on Railroad Avenue, but when we do single-family home projects within the city, their restrictions aren't as high as commercial development. And so because this site is a larger development, we're being held to commercial development standards and because it's a special exception. And so, single-family homes, they do have to meet water quantity requirements, which is the first half of the stormwater management. But they're actually not necessarily required to meet water quantity, sorry. They're required to meet water quality requirements, but not necessarily required to meet water quantity requirements just because for single-family homeowners, it's onerous for them to have to pay for a system to detain their stormwater. So as long as there aren't any, you know, known issues of flooding, typically for single-family homes, they are allowed to increase runoff onto adjacent properties as long as it's sheet flow and it's not concentrated and not going to cause erosion downstream.
So that would be an interesting thing if we're going to do a comparison of, if this was four homes versus cottage community. That's another point of comparison that would be important to include.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
Sorry, two more questions. My initial round of questions, I think, have been answered satisfactorily, but I will, I share Mr. Snyder's sentiment that I think it'd be helpful to have written responses to everything that's been talked about, especially in response to the neighbors. I worry that there's just misinformation that's getting propagated. For example, oh my God, it's going to be eleven houses when really it's just ten homes plus eleventh building. So I think those little details are important just to make sure that everyone has the facts. So I would like to see that before it comes back to us. And then a question for staff, before it comes back to us on May eighth, will the city attorney have a chance to review their use of the Housing for Older Persons Act? That legal opinion they talked about getting submitted term?
Well, the city attorney already has just on that one specific question. And it is, she has said to me directly that, that the owner can covenant that eighteen, you know, that eighteen-age restriction. It would not be typically something a city could require, but if the owner covenants and it's part of a voluntary concession, it's part of rezoning, then that would officially be the regulation on the site.
So they can be more restrictive than what the federal law allows?
Well, and that restriction is allowable under the federal law. That's a really key point, that that would not be considered discrimination by the federal law. In fact, that would be permitted by federal law.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a few comments, a few questions. One, I like your environmental, your, I don't know what you want to call it. You've just got some good environmental things. Like the solar panels, I like the geothermal, it's nicely landscaped. I think you've done a nice job in that regards. I do have some concerns, I do have some questions. One of my concerns is the amount of parking. I think, I mean, at a minimum, every house is going to have a car. I just cannot imagine. I just cannot imagine that a house would be here and be able to get by without a car. You're on the bike trail, which is great, but it's really not an area you're going to walk too much, particularly if you're gearing towards older people. And so I have some concerns about your total number of parking. I think frankly, the project would benefit from three or four more parking spaces, even with the same amount of houses, or in the alternative, less houses, same amount of parking. I think the density is just, it could go down a little bit, and I think it'd probably make a better project. There's really no margin of error with 10 parking spaces and 10 houses. I have some concerns about the headlights on the neighbor. You're basically going to have--
It is 13.
Yeah, but three of those are supposedly dedicated for visitors, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, if they truly are quote visitor spaces, then they're one parking space per house. I have some concerns about the headlights as well coming into your, basically hitting up against a neighbor's property. You're going to have 10 people coming in presumably every night with their headlights kind of splashing forward. I know you have a fence, although fences have slats and things like that. I think you ought to give some more thought to how to mitigate that, you know, whether there'd be some kind of solid knee wall or something that would keep the headlights from spraying through a board-on-board fence or whatever you're proposing. The grasscrete that you were talking about next to Railroad Avenue, who would maintain that? Would the condominium association maintain that? Would the city maintain that?
We've already had, I believe, a discussion with the city works. They've maintained the asphalt road now, both for plowing as well as, I believe, he was checking to make sure it was on the maintenance. And was doing--
So we've had a discussion with the Public Works to determine that they are, in fact, able to maintain the grass pave as well. They're familiar with it. He says, yes, you put the rubber tips on the plow, and it's not a problem. They're already doing it in other places in the city. And he was also confirming that the asphalt road that's there now is within his, the new process where they're photographing every square inch of asphalt in the city and determining the status and putting it into the regular upkeep program. So he was confirming that would also be the case.
Okay. Mr. Shields, can you just make sure that we get answers to some of those questions? I think also, just getting back to the by right, whether it's four or three, it'd be great to have city staff look or whatever you might prepare. And if you want to lay out a house on there just to show that it's actually can get a house, not just quote a lot, but something you could build on with the setbacks and the like and by right, I think that would just help the conversation go along. I have a concern as well. The condominium documents, I think, are critical, what you've described, the restrictions that might be there, I imagine are very important to folks in council, maybe folks in the neighborhood and the community as a whole. And I have some questions and concerns about that. One, the condominium documents are going to contain certain restrictions on the age of people who can live there. I actually prepare homeowner association documents and the like, and I've never had one that doesn't have a provision that allows for their amendment by the people who are the owners of the property.
I believe our goal was to put those things, were meant to be unalterable, like the age, et cetera, into as a deed restriction.
And so you put in a deed restriction, it's a covenant, who does it run to?
The land.
Well, I know, but the land is you. I mean, in other words, typically like a covenant to be enforceable by someone outside of the owner of the property, it runs to someone else to enforce. And so I guess if, why, if you guys could give some thought as to making sure that these things are actually enforceable. In other words, if there is quote a covenant or some kind of deed restriction, those run to someone other than your homeowners--
Absolutely.
--or it really doesn't benefit anyone, they could change them at will. And so I guess the question would be, could that run to the city? And if so, is it allowable? In other words, does federal allow us to enforce something beyond federal law, even though it's been voluntarily offered up? Can we in fact enforce that if in fact the covenant were to run to us? Do you understand the question?
I do.
Okay. I think that's sort of a central thing in the economic impact and other things.
Yeah. It's certainly our goal to make it an unalterable piece of the property. So whatever that takes, it can be reasonably enforced, we're happy to do.
Sure. And I think we just need to explore more fully what in fact that mechanism is, and in fact, is it something that can be done, legally, lawfully done? So let me ask you also about the street itself or Railroad Avenue. I guess it's the street. Is it wide enough, or will it be wide enough for cars to pass on when you put the grasscrete or whatever it's called on the side, where it'd still be basically one car at one time up there?
I mean, technically, yes, you can get two cars passed. A parking space is nine feet, this would be 18 feet, you can get two cars moving slowly. I would venture to say that if you run through parts of the city where there are cars on both sides of the street, people don't try that too often. They tend to back, you know, get off into a driveway or do something or give precedence to the other car coming out. So it's the same sort of jockeying negotiation that people have to do over the entire city. But yes, 18 feet wide is technically feasible for two cars moving slowly to go past each other.
Okay. What is your price point? Do you have a rough idea of your price point of the units?
Right now, we think our market comparison are some of the units in which, the Bryan?
The Byron.
The Byron. The Byron and Broadway have very similar sized units. We think we're going to be in that kind of price range with a superior product because you won't have neighbors over top of you or side-by-side. You have fully detached homes in a much richer environment and a place where you actually have a better chance of knowing nine other households than you do 140.
So I'm not familiar with what Byron is selling for now. Just like 600,000, 700,000, 500,000?
I mean, that's sort of the range. I mean, it's 600, 700.
You said 700 or so? Okay. I'm trying to think if I've got anything else. I think you've answered my questions or I've made my comments that maybe I'm not getting questions. Mr. Snyder, do you have something else?
I do. Generally, as we work on these projects, the developer's able to work with the neighborhood, and the neighborhoods get pretty accept the project over time. But with this, it seems the opposition is growing. So what are you doing to reach out to the neighborhood? And what are you hearing from them? And how do we bring you guys together, if that's possible, to sort of, you know, work through some things and provide some certainty to the neighborhood? I think that's a fundamental issue here because we are acting to grant something that isn't permitted by right. So what are you doing with that? And what's the percentage of the neighborhood around the site that support it or oppose it at this point? And what sort of meetings--
I would say if you wanted to count, you count yellow signs in the lawns and maybe have a good indication. I would say that what we've done is we've tried to be as open and transparent as possible. We've had at least one meeting. We catalogued some of the concerns. We've tried to be responsive to all of them. The difficulty, as you're well aware, in all land use cases, is making the truth credible. I believe that we have a very good story to tell and try to get it distilled down into the pieces of the puzzle so it is clear. There may still be disagreement about how, you know, the thought process, but we're trying to put it in not our voice, don't trust our math, trying to give third-party information that is confirmable, you know, by outside parties, not just take our word for it. We are scheduling another meeting with the community. I believe that's for May 17th in the evening, and we're committed to doing it again. I mean, as you well know, during outside agencies, during your deliberations, during the planning commission, there may be changes made to the plan that we also would like to vet through the neighborhood. So as it develops, and if there are significant changes, we would go back to the neighborhood again. And that's the best we can do.
So you've had one meeting with the neighborhood, is that right?
Correct.
And then you plan to have another one on the, you said, the 17th?
Correct. And we've given everybody, you know, a central location to give us email and commentary back. We haven't gotten a lot through that. We've been mostly going on to, you know, websites and other polls just to get a sense of what else is going on. You know, there's public information to be had, so we're trying to poll that and put it together. I did try to use the ordinance planning element to also address all the key pieces that we heard so far, both at the initial meeting. There's not been a significant change in what the key concerns are, and we're trying to put it in terms of how it benefits the community, immediate community as well as at large, the entire city.
Okay. I would just urge as much dialogue as you can with the community. Again, I think that's sometimes results and changes the projects that are actually mutually beneficial, and sometimes it helps just lower the temperature so that, you know, the kind of dialogue that can occur that can be very constructive. So I would just urge you to please reach out to the community and work with them. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? We should go ahead and wrap up. Thank you all for going on the walking tour and getting ready for that and helping us all visualize the project and for coming this evening. It's a continuing dialogue. We have many miles to go before we sleep, so thank you for coming out, and we'll be talking with you soon.
Thank you.
All righty. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is third quarter financial report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. And Kieran Bawa, our finance director, will come forward to present this report. And she's getting settled in. I will note that this financial report has been presented to the Budget and Finance Committee. It was done about a week ago, and so we'll just share the report and have a brief discussion of it.
All righty. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. We have--
Have you turned around our finances in the two weeks you've been here? All right.
So before you is the third quarter results, which is revenues and expenditures for the first nine months of the fiscal year, from July through March. And we are also attempting to provide projections for both the revenues and the expenditures, starting on attachment A. If we go through page one, I don't think they're labeled, but the one with the date, the page with the date on it, 417, shows the revenues projections as well as the actuals to date along with the budget, the first three columns. Off note are the real property taxes due to adjustments to assessed values and some tax relief and deferrals that came in higher than what we had budgeted. We are projecting a little less than 250,000 in collections for the real property taxes. And the other big one is the license and permits due to not receiving, delaying the project, the Mason Road project and a couple small projects as well. Those are the two big ones of note. Fines and forfeiture is due to the--
Federal assistance.
Yeah, and the red light camera program delay that had some issues. It is up and running again. We will see some revenue from it for the rest of the fiscal year. However, we saw a gap on that. I think those are the ones I want to highlight. If you have any questions here, before we go to the expenditures, we can discuss this As far as next fiscal year, you know, we have adjusted for the categories that we talked about. The expenditures tend to be a little bit more volatile because a lot happened, can happen during the last quarter of the fiscal year. There are two or three departments that are projected to overspend, one being the sheriff's department. There are jail costs that came in higher than what was budgeted. And in development services, there was recruitment of a planner for a bike share program to be supported by the revenues, but the program started late. So that, and also there was the visioning process, which required some temp's help, which wasn't budgeted. So that's why development services is projected to go over. In overall, the revenues are projected as much as about 785,000 shortfall, and with an offset in expenditures, we are projecting a net shortfall of 450,000 roughly for this fiscal year. I do want to note that we have a development permit reserve, which has a balance of roughly 900,000 as of now. And since we are at a position, if the revenues from Mason Road are not realized, that we would be able to, with staff recommends, that those revenues, that reserve be tapped into to address any shortfall that we may experience in this fiscal year.
Okay. Vice Mayor Connolly, then Ms. Hardy.
So speaking of the reserve, it looks like we're $660,000. It is, it's really quiet. Yeah. $660,000 under on, is that how much would come out of the development reserves? Or we just take out the shortfall? I want to answer that.
I think as the, we're going to bring a budget amendment forward at your next work session to have that very discussion. We would, there are a couple things that budget amendment should do, is handle grants, which we have a good number of, handle the campus planning effort, and then two, make our best projections on what we think an appropriate use of the reserves would be. But that is the connection. And what the council established that reserve for was to help us deal with the volatility in these big projects. And so, you know, Founders Row is not going to pay very, you know, significant building permit fees are associated with a project that size. They're obviously not going to be in this fiscal year. And so the purpose of the reserve is to allow us to keep our staff in a position to be able to handle big projects when they come forward. Maybe not forever, but at least, you know, to bridge a reasonable period of time. And so this really is what the reserve was established to handle.
Ms. Hardy?
I have two questions. So one also on the building permit reserve. So I heard, Karen, you say that the shortfall, net shortfall is about 450,000. Do we have a policy around how much of the reserve we can dip into, given that we currently have 900 in there, and we'd be taking half? Or is that, that'll come in the budget amendment discussion, what kind of--
I'll speak to it, just because we established that before Karen was here. I think that our basic policy is we want to use it very wisely, because there could be a two-year delay. You know, we want that reserve to be able to bridge as long a distance as possible. And so part of our discussion on May 15th is what is the responsible use of it? I think using half of it in one year is more than what I had in mind when we were creating it. I'll just say that. That would be 450,000. That seems to me to be on the high side, but, you know, that's something I think we'll evaluate within the context of an overall budget amendment.
So my second question was on the shortfall we're seeing on revenue. So I saw there was an explanation why we saw double the amount of abatements that we were projecting, mainly on the commercial side, but sales tax revenue being below budget. Which seems counter to, kind of with a couple of big projects coming online, counter to what we were expecting. How much below are they coming in at? If we have a good understanding of why?
Well, sales tax is nominally less projection, 16,000, 19,000, less than 1% for the fiscal And from my understanding is that the new developments that we thought the revenue that they would generate, the disposable income, it hasn't reached the level that we budgeted, and for that reason, we're keeping it flat for the fiscal year '18 as well.
Mainly because of Tanner Hill one, by now, we have expected to fully come online?
Yeah, that's correct. And one thing we'll just take a look at is compared to the actuals, our sales tax receipts are up almost 9%. We budgeted, if I recall, an 11% increase. So that's where the, you know, with Lincoln Hill, with that, with the Lincoln Projects retail not coming online, that's one piece of it.
Because what I'm actually interested in is whether, well, namely Harris Teeter, is actually overperforming, because if we were expecting 11 with both of those coming online, and we only have one, 9%, then it's doing pretty well, right? So I'm curious whether we had projections or what one might have done, and now we're actually doing. Because the understanding, I've gotten questions from the community, like, gosh, why did you raise my taxes? I thought, you know, we got this brand-new grocery store that opened up that seems like is doing really well. And so this just seems counter to that, what you hear in the streets. So I think that explanation would be valuable for people.
All right. Any other questions? The chair of the vice of the Budget and Finance Committee have anything to say?
No.
Okay. All righty. All right. Anything else to be said on this? Or should we thank, thank you very much for coming out. Or should we thank, thank you very much for coming out, for your good work. Look forward to working with you more. Alright, let's move on to our last item. Council work plan.
Alright, thank you. Last item on the agenda for tonight is the council work plan. And this is the council's work plan, so I don't want to, you know, go through, I'd like this to be an opportunity for you all to discuss, sort of thinking back to what your main objectives were for the two-year planning period, if there are things that you want us to be focused on that we haven't discussed at the beginning of the meeting, which we know are coming up, you know, in the immediate several months, to make sure we get accomplished before this council is through by the end of this year. I will just note on the first page, there are a lot of successes with the streetscape design standards. That was a high priority for the council and that was adopted back in March. And the vision was adopted back in April. The revitalization districts, those were, that was adopted just about a year ago. The, and so, those are, you know, among the top priorities of the council, those have been accomplished. And the placemaking investments, one that I know the council has a couple of points of interest. The council did, and we noted this is a new item, the council did approve a sustained revenue source for downtown improvements, or not necessarily downtown improvements, but business district improvements. So, a lot of these things that we sometimes fight to find money for, like banners or planters or holiday lighting, that we now have a sustained dedicated source of funding, almost like a bid or a mini business improvement district to help fund those things. The downtown plaza, our project manager is, is working to advance that project. We're at 30% engineering. There is a meeting with the EDA that will occur next Tuesday night, where we will go through some tough budget decisions, because a lot of the, sort of the nice amenities you'd like to have in a park are above that, the $500,000 grant that the EDA made for this project. So, that will be a discussion. My assumption is that's going to be a discussion really kind of contained financially with the EDA, that if they want to fund some more of those things, that would come out of EDA funds. Council may want to push that in a different direction or weigh in on that, but that's the assumption that we will go into that briefing with the EDA on next Tuesday.
Maybe tomorrow night.
I'm sorry, yeah, tomorrow night. Just a couple of notes on the transportation side. The, some of the, you know, the major transportation project in the city that we're working on is the South Washington Street improvements. We will be doing utility undergrounding, we hope, over this summer, but certainly over the fall. And then the actual streetscape and the, and the nice stuff that people will enjoy will be next spring. Bike share, we were hoping to roll bike share out this summer. With the funding being federalized, that proved to be not possible. And so, what we will do is, is we go through in the next couple of months, work with the council on the siting of, of the bike share locations and go through all of our planning and procurement and go for a good rollout of that system next spring. Spring is when you do want to roll bike share out and let there be good use over the summer and some patterns and habits form over the summer months, rather than roll it out in the fall. I'll just make one note on the 400 block of West Broad Street. This would be in front of the Beto's Leather Works. We are working to secure the right-of-way there. That's been slower than we anticipated. But part of that budget amendment that we'll bring to you in, in two weeks, we will also ask for a, a piece of the proceeds from the Hillwood right-of-way to pay for the work. We'll do it internally. We'll have public work staff handle it, but to pay for the right-of-way acquisition and the Dominion and Verizon undergrounding to allow that streetscape to become as wide and as accessible as the rest of the streetscape on that, on that block. Any other comments on the transportation items before we move to the next?
I do have one. Recently received a piece of correspondence from a constituent that wonders why, three and a half years after a discussion on where to locate the, the bus stop, and she had two. One of them, I guess underway, at the State Theater, that there's an easement issue, where I, or rather, I guess, the cost of an easement issue. And it just seems to me that three and a half years is a long time to wait for a bus stop and easement, you know? Do we wait seven years for the easement issue to be resolved, or do we just put that into the budget amendment and get it done?
We have, for all of our bus shelters, we've not paid for those easements. It's been, it's been a constructive dialogue between property owners about trying to do something that's useful. And that negotiation kind of got sideways right off the bat. It's in front of the Center for Spiritual Enlightenment and they basically had a dollar figure that they wanted for the bus shelter easement. We are concerned about going into a process where we would pay particularly the price they're asking, because we've gotten the rest of them for no charge. And so, my preference would be to continue to try to work with them in a constructive way. I get the point, it's been a long time, but that's really the rub with that one easement. The one across the street in front of the Kaiser, I think they, they've had a lot of technical issues and going through their legal decision-making process took a long time.
Well, some bright mind once said the classic definition of insanity is to do the same thing repeatedly and expect a different result. So, I hope you keep that for-ism in mind as you go forward for the next three and a half years with no result as well.
Well, we've gotten, we've been successful with eight of them. Eight shelters have been installed.
City manager, I'm only asking you about one.
Okay.
What's the strategy to get that one done?
Well, we could talk about it offline. Patience sometimes is, is a virtue in these things, unless you break precedent and, and your costs can then multiply from there. That's the concern.
Mr. Connolly.
A question on bike share.
Yes.
I keep waiting to see on our calendar when we're going to, is there a work session coming up where we're going to talk about where bike share is going to be located? There's, I see a status report next. Is that part of that status report? The location of bike share? When is the community going to have an opportunity to weigh in on where bike share locations are going to be?
Yeah, we will lay that schedule out. The purpose of, and that's going to be next week.
Okay.
The purpose of next week's briefing is not really to begin to engage in where they will go, but rather just to lay out the schedule.
So, there will be a whole community engagement schedule related to the bike share locations?
Well, I would say this, it's good to have community input, but it's also possibly even better to have professional input from people who've run bike share and, for a long time, and they know where these stations are going to work and where they might be less successful. I would advise that let's let that drive the process, but then the community can weigh in and maybe have some good wisdom about some tweaks to it. But that would be my advice on how we proceed with it.
So, that's what, we'll have a professional layout of where bike share should go in the city with an opportunity for public input. And that, how long will that take?
The public, or the professional analysis is already underway and the report is due shortly. And so, that'll be part of the update is sort of where that is. And then Carrie has laid out a proposed schedule for feedback to that professional developed plan.
Okay. So, so we see this bike share line goes all the way across to spring 2018. But where on this schedule do we think we'll know where the locations will be?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my CIP notebook with me, which I have Carrie's briefing on that. But I think it's within the May and June timeframe.
Of this year.
They'll be starting the public engagement concurrent with the procurement. And so, then we can finalize the locations and make sure we have right-of-way and the lead time to produce the bike shares for installing next spring.
Okay. So, maybe by the fall of this year, we'll have a sense of where they're going to be?
And I believe we'll have a...
That's the, the fall is, is the time for...
There's a fair amount of lead time to order the station, so we want to get that done so we're ready for installing spring. But Carrie, I believe, has all of that planned for your briefing next.
Carrie had brought a draft of it to the EDA meeting last month. I think the challenge is much like bus shelters, where the ideal locations we may not have easements for. And so, I think we'll have to balance between where we have easements, where there may be city land with, may not be the ideal spot that the planners recommend, but I think it's also, you know, good enough sometimes is okay too. For example, I think in front of Howard Herman Park was maybe like half a block from where the ideal location would be, but given that the city owns that land right in front of the park, that may be an okay location, especially if it means we can get it done 18 months earlier than we would otherwise. I think that's what, that's what we shared with her.
And I think that's important discussion, because if you recall, we're using federal money now and that changes the complexities of right-of-way acquisition. And we want to move quicker and make sure our money goes far.
Ms. Oliver.
So, on the question of bus shelters or bike share stations, I think it's really important as a city that we not start the precedent of paying for the easements. These, these facilities, these transportation facilities have the potential to be a real benefit to our downtown businesses. It should be, I mean, they're, they're going to gain from having that type of access and that type of visibility. And so, I think that the compensation that they get for having that there should make it something that they are willing to invest in, that they should be our partners in this. And so, I think that, that's a really important thing that we take forward, that, you know, we don't put out there that we're going to start throwing money at it, because money is the thing we have the least of. But our commitment to investing in the business district and investing in our community and creating a walkable, bikeable, multimodal area, that's absolutely critical. That said, on the transportation items, Mr. Shields, at the time that we developed this work plan, we still had a 3T bus. Is that not correct?
I think it probably had just ended.
Right. And so, I don't know to the extent, I don't know that we don't, I know we don't want to add a whole lot onto this work plan, but that was a really critical change that occurred shortly after we made this. And we have put, as a city, a lot of investment into trying to improve multimodal. You know, we've put in the bus shelters, you know, we see that we're going to get bus arrival signs coming. And so, I think that it's important to continue to work on replacing that 3T service or finding some way to connect from West Falls Church to East Falls Church metro stations to the center of our town, because without that, a lot of the investments that we're making in the buses, you know, won't get utilized as fully.
Ms. Hardy.
So, while we're on transportation, something that we've talked about in the EDC meetings, I don't know whether we want to, whether it bubbles up to kind of adding on this work plan is the parking improvements that we've talked about. So, for example, on Park Avenue, making sure that we are zoning two-hour parking for faster turnaround, so we don't have people staying in those spots for the whole day and taking up that parking. I think there are some proactive things we can also do on the side streets like North Lee, making sure those two-hour parking signs in the right spaces. So, I think those would be some really nice quick wins on transportation that we can get done, maybe this spring perhaps.
Okay, we skipped through something. I was going to make a brief comment on holiday lighting. What's going on with the holiday lighting?
The, so the good news is we have some funding for it. The EDA is working right now with Barb Graham, I think is, I'm not sure when she's next scheduled to go to the EDA with her...
Two meetings ago, the EDA went and looked at tree lights versus pole lights, because the, a new idea that has come up is instead of wrapping trees, whether we can wrap our light poles, because you never hear about concerns about the poles getting constricted. Because even the idea about leaving lights year-round, even when you wrap trunks, you actually have to go in twice a year and still unwrap them. And so, it's really the labor costs of having to do that. And so, when we took a walking tour out and compared the lights and the EDA's comment generally was wrapping poles seemed like a fine solution. I think we were waiting for Barb to come back with estimates on how we would do that and the cost. I imagine it would be cheaper than wrapping trees. And so, we'd get more bang for our buck, because you could probably wrap more light poles for longer stretches of Broad Street besides just the 100 and 200 blocks. So, I think that's the current plan, but I think we're just waiting for Barb to come back. She's tentatively on the schedule for tomorrow night as well.
Alright, let's just try to get something wrapped up so we can implement it this Christmas, this holiday.
Fortunately, it did look like color-changing lights, Mayor. We're going to be very expensive though.
Alright, why don't we keep on going, Mr. Shields?
Can you wrap bus shelters while you're at it?
On the area of the environment and open space, the community energy plan and climate change work, the council did adopt the COG, carbon emission goals and the action steps that are associated with that. We've got the solarized work that is ongoing and the publicity for that. And we've been a leader in that. The, the other things that we will be doing, I think in terms of meeting those COG emission goals that are now the city's emission reduction goals, is specific action plans here in the city of Falls Church that we will, that we will carry out and the timeframe in which we'll carry those out. The paper streets at Screenways, they're, that really is pretty much ready to go in terms of the, the language. It's just a question of bringing that back and getting that back on the council agenda. And then...
Can we bring it back before the end of 2017?
And then the strategic parcels for land acquisition, that's an ongoing effort. The school campus site, we've been spending a ton of time on that. I won't go through all of those, but, because we just marched through the meetings that are coming up on the feasibility study, market study, CIP amendment and the small area plan. The clean-up the city area of the work plan, we have had, I think, a lot of success with urban forestry and with our environmental services coordinator in bringing volunteers in to help us with a lot of these efforts. The invasive removals, that, that program has really been revitalized. Our cleanup, our spring cleanup was two weeks ago. And so, we're carrying that forward. The, the dog waste stations that came out of this discussion also, those are, those are off, we think there's been very successful in terms of people are donating, donating the bags and using them. One of the new items is working with the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board about not smoking in our parks. We don't have the authority to ban it under state law, but instead have it be more of a campaign. Please don't smoke in our parks approach. We won't be able to issue tickets, but persuade. In the area of inclusivity, the cottages area was, was very much part of that discussion about having additional housing types that would allow people to meet different housing needs in the city. We have not brought forward carriage houses or garages. That has not come forward, but cottages has. I don't know if council wants to discuss that any further. Senior tax relief program, I think the treasurer and along with OCOM have been trying to do a lot to publicize that program. We did have on April 4th a town hall meeting on the, on the relief options for seniors. We did not have good participation in that. It was actually timed right during the senior centers programs, but the effort has been there. The Miller House, I've added to the work plan just because that...
Question here.
Yes.
It would be great to have some metrics on that one, the senior tax relief program. How many people were using it before? To what extent? After we made the changes, how many people are using it? How many people are eligible that aren't using it? Just so that we...
Have more data on it.
Just some more data to know if it's working or if it needs to be beefed up in the future. Are there people that almost qualify but make a little bit too much money? And has the cost of lunga been enough that they could qualify?
I think those are good questions. So, let's schedule a time to have the treasurer give a report. The treasurer has mentioned to me that we have fewer applicants for senior tax relief today than we did two years ago. And so, why?
Right. Are people moving away and they don't need it anymore? Or...
I think that, you know, that's, I don't know the, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, it would be interesting just to have some data we could sift through and try to nail that down.
Two new ones. The Miller House was not on the work plan before, but obviously that's, we're going to be advancing that soon, hopefully. I think we've gotten, sent out the news on that and that, essentially that positive news is still moving forward. So, hopefully that will, we'll be able to bring that home. And then the Housing Commission at their last meeting talks about updating the city's affordable housing policy. It was last done five years ago.
Before you switch the page over, I think it was last week's meeting, I can't even remember anymore, we talked about sexual orientation as protected class, and you were going to do some more research, the city attorney is going to do some more research on what kind of authority the city had to do that. Did you get any more information on that? Did you get any more information on that?
Um, what we have done is confirm what the city attorney said at that meeting with, as, with respect to housing. But we can get that more formally communicated to the city council. What the council has done, though, is like in our internal HR policies and all the things that we have control over, we have identified sexual orientation as, in terms of our policies, is to, that they're, that our programs and our policies are available for everybody, regardless of, of sexual identity. And so we've done that in areas where we can. But we could bring a, a little bit more information on where we have taken those actions, and where there are some areas where we haven't, but we think there are probably some state laws that make that difficult.
So, do, hang on just a second. So, if you guys could just sort of fully, more fully vet that out, what we can do and are we doing all we can, then at least we, as a group, can hear about it and decide whether we want to attempt to take further action.
So, Ms. Hardy? With respect to housing, because the Housing Commission was interested in this, I had actually asked Carol about this a year ago, when I guess when we passed our housing proclamation, and she had said the same thing, that because we were a Dillon Rule State, we couldn't by ordinance add gender, gender and sexual orientation on our fair housing ordinance as it is. But the newest member of the Housing Commission actually researched this, and the City of Alexandria has actually added both in there, not by ordinance. And so it gets around the Dillon Rule issue, where they just added by a resolution or something. And so I've asked that, I think Carol and the Housing Commission member, who's also a fair housing attorney, they're getting together this week to talk about how maybe Alexandria had done it, and look for maybe a best practice that we could apply here. So there is movement.
Okay, and also just in terms of our own policies as a city, in terms of employment, and, has, do we, has that already in our own policies within city government?
It's, it's in our administrative regulations, and it, and it's in our regulations, for example, for health benefits, and, you know, our benefit programs, that partners or same-sex partners have some status that, under state law, is not typical, but we have enacted in the city, at the city level.
Okay.
And is this in our legislative program?
It is, each year it is in our legislative program. I'm, I'm not sure whether, specifically with respect to housing policy, it has been in pretty broad other areas, but-
Yeah, it has been broad areas. We, last year did not have it for housing, but we have had in the past for housing, and also for income. That's an uphill battle, too, but council could recommend that for our next session.
Thanks, Mayor. Connelly?
On the affordable housing policy update, I know that the Human Services Advisory Committee and the Housing Commission had a joint meeting to talk about that. I don't know if you've gotten any further with those groups on what that housing policy update would look like. Is it more of a, an update of the whole policy, or is it a, how can we tighten up certain things? Are you-
In my follow-up since that conversation, I've gotten the sense that it's the update of the whole policy. And, um, and in our conversation, I expressed the view that that really was an enormous effort. It took us possibly over two years, I think, to update it last time, and that a possibly more focused approach would be a better use of time. The sense I've gotten, however, is the Housing Commission is very enthusiastic about doing a, looking at the whole policy.
Okay. And we think that'll take them through next spring.
Yeah, one other piece of it is, the housing staff have been working on the housing chapter of the comp plan.
Right.
And that's another area where you can address housing policy. And so that's another, that hasn't been updated for over five years, I think like since 10 years ago is the last time that, that, that chapter of the comp plan was updated. That's another vent avenue.
Is there a way we can ask them or direct them to, to, to look at it that way, instead of spending two years and rewriting a policy? I mean, I know there are specific things that they're disappointed that haven't occurred more robustly because of the last policy. But looking at the comp plan, is that another way to do that?
Uh, let me follow up on that, and we get back with the council on that.
I, I would hate to have them spend two years working on something that could be fixed with some tweaks, but I understand their enthusiasm for improving it.
Right.
Could, could we, as a council, give them direction that we want to see this change come before us within a year, and that they should use whatever mechanisms are possible to make sure they address that speedily?
If I could just chime in as the liaison, so they've been enthusiastic for the past year in wanting to do it. I think some direction would be helpful for them. Specifically, I think they're most interested in the 6% affordable housing guidance. I don't think they've actually talked about much else in the policy, other than the 6%.
Okay, what's the last page you got for us?
Welcoming city. Uh, the, we don't have a welcome packet that we mail out to new residents, but we do have it available. And, um, and there's also the community guide that we work with the Chamber on, which is a great resource. And we also try to get welcoming information into the Wreckin' Parks brochure. With respect to signage, that's an ongoing effort with Vipus, and, and I think the action there is to, um, is to try to bring those discussions to a close about what that signage looks like. And, and we'll follow up on that.
On, on all those welcoming things, I'd, I have, don't think I've ever seen what the new resident packet looks like. Can you, can you get that for us?
Yeah.
And I think the community guide may be going out of circulation this year?
It's going to continue, but my understanding is going to be broader, and it'll include the Greater Falls Church area.
Oh, okay.
And so, um, OCOM and Susan's looking at how to make sure our city focus stays city within the rest of their messaging, so.
White, has there been any effort to get that welcome packet out to Realtors, or out to-
There has been, yes.
Apartment complex owners, managers?
Yeah, we got copies to the two new big buildings as they were opening up to have, so that they had information. And I know we did it with the Realtors close to when this retreat was, but let me check and see what, what we've done most recently.
Okay. Do people come through your office, Mr. Clinton, when they're new?
Bring a lot of that stuff to them when we visit the new buildings and the new managers. And we email them every city kind of football festival, Memorial Day.
You need to be on the recording, thank you.
Because we found that really helps a lot, and, and management turns over at these places, so you have to kind of regularly keep in touch with them. And we wanted to be positive in two ways. You know, so if they had concerns, that they would let us know, and we would bring them to appropriate city staff, and so that they feel more part of the community. And then, a lot of people just, they come from different states, they don't have car taxes and other things, so it decreases tickets, it gets better initial buy-in, and, but, you know, these packets, I mean, tenant, you know, paperwork is kind of thick, so it's not an absolute perfect system, but you, you hope. That if you get in front of them, email them, and some have public places where they put announcements and stuff. So I think we made big progress on that, and having two new buildings makes it a, you know, a bigger challenge. But you get a little better at it, you get different people, you can kind of pitch and, you know, go around. And then we go to the existing buildings as well, to make sure, as, as those management teams, you know, turn over, you know, are they, you know, bringing that down to all staff members and all new residents? Because we, we just don't want people to find out what they have to do by ticket.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And if they're within the, you know, range and stuff, those tickets are, are dropped.
Right, so it's good to use those apartment managers as our partners.
Yeah.
And getting that word out.
Sure, absolutely, that was the goal.
Thank you. And then as far as the, the welcome signs, since that has become the Mary Beth Connolly issue here on city council? One of the, you know, we've all looked at the VDOT bike bridge and talked about how that would be nice to have that welcoming. I'm wondering if that should either be here on welcoming city or on transportation, to work with VDOT to make that bridge be a welcoming feature? Because I think that's really important. At the COG meeting I attended on Friday, there were several Arlington County board members there who, did they send you their letter that they sent to VDOT, Cindy? Right, and they are hoping that the City of Falls Church will work closely with them to work on the look and features of that bridge, so that Arlington and Falls Church have that welcoming feature in there.
And, and we will get a draft letter out for the council to look at, I think, very shortly.
Okay.
I would note that there's a meeting on this tomorrow night at Yorktown High School, another one. Do, who all from the council is planning to attend that? We ought to have a couple people there.
Didn't, didn't they agree to do one in Falls Church as well?
Yeah, this, the one tomorrow is a follow-up with some additional renderings and changes based on the April 5th community meeting and the staff meeting we had, which I do want to confirm that City of Falls Church staff and Arlington staff are working together on those issues. And so this is the one that was already planned and noticed. And then today, we got confirmation that VDOT is looking for a location in the city for a June meeting. Don't have a date or time yet for that.
Okay.
But any of these meetings that are scheduled outside the city, we're directly emailing, like, the neighbors that we know have concerns and stuff, so we're reaching out to Gresham Place HOA, for example.
So I'll try to get there tomorrow night, but anyone else? I know we had a couple council members at the last one, and I think maintaining a very close relationship with Arlington on the look and feel of the bridge will be very important to success.
I think that partnership is very important, since the bridge is actually not within the city limits.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So just back to the welcoming signs, I'm wondering if this year we can, because there are no filled-in blocks here, really identify what are our gateways? We know where the, those Falls Church city limit signs are, that we work with Vipus on, but where are our other gateways? And is there a way to add the word welcome to those signs as they exist? Do we need to work with Vipus on that? Is, it, it seems like it would be part of streetscape, almost. What does the welcome sign look like in Falls Church? Does the bike path count as a place where we need to be welcomed? I just think we need to put our minds to this, because if we just leave it blank, it'll just stay the way it is. And I would just like to add that, you know, while Vipus has partnered with us on the past, I think this is a really critical investment that we need to be making in our city, and it's comparable to what we're doing in some of the placemaking. It falls not only under the welcoming city, but also under placemaking. If we really want this to be a place, we need to take a look at the Business Improvement District funds that we're developing. We came up with a little bit this year for the downtown, you know, we sort of said we were going to spend it in the downtown area, the, the additional hotel tax. But I think, you know, for the next budget year, we really need to find and commit a source of city funding to this. I mean, it's a one-time thing, but it is a huge part of our placemaking. I mean, even our neighbors that don't have, I don't think nearly the identity that we do, are putting up these kinds of signs. And, and I don't want to name them, but, you know, I'm like, if, if that place is doing this and we're not, you know, we're, we're going to lose out in terms of our identity.
Let me, let me add that in one of the Friday sessions, we had one of the consultants for the economic development part of the school project, talked about what makes Falls Church different than the surrounding areas, authenticity. So I think we ought to collectively put our minds to what does that really mean? And what are those sort of soft costs that we can do, including the signs and other things, to enhance that at relatively low costs? So, it's nothing we can resolve tonight, but I, I think a lot of these comments, and then that one, about really the future of the city is to be different and unique, and as that one expert said, authentic, is, I think, important. Why, do you have some, you know, initial reaction to some, I mean, we've been doing bits and pieces of this, there are some additional bits and pieces we need to do different and add, but it would be good to try to grasp this whole thing, to understand it, and then to figure out what are the things that we're doing that are really going well, and then what, what's missing from that. And again, a lot of this stuff isn't particularly high-cost. I mean, everything like, I noticed one of the signs, one of the historic marker signs, you know, the little yellow and green signs, it's going like that on Broad Street. So, a tiny little thing like that, but it, it's these other pieces. I think the best bus shelters look great, by the way. I think they're a really distinctive feature, that they're really public art. So, what, how do we put this together and, and also bring in, you know, the sense of our business community? I mean, there's some very, very good things going on, but what else can we do to sort of push it in that direction? Because now we've been told, not only is it a quality of life issue for the people that are here, but what he said is, your future economically is going to rely on you having this sense of difference from the surrounding areas. And need I add one additional point? The whole traffic calming issue is, I think, linked in here as well. So, we need, we need to really focus on that, too. Thanks.
Okay, last item?
So those are, the, the council and board operations, the, I guess the one thing we'll just note, we've listed here the groups, you know, all the boards and commissions that have come to work sessions. When I looked at the list, I felt like it had been more than that, but that's when we went through the records, that's, that's who has come through. So we'll check that list, make sure that everybody has come through, and, and start, you know, just keep that going.
Yeah, if somebody hasn't come through, let's get them through.
Yeah.
Let's just find a way to get everybody through here.
Are you saying all boards and commissions by the end of this year?
I'm saying all boards and commissions, whether it's by the end of this year or not, I don't know. But let's, let's just make an effort to get the folks we haven't gotten yet. Okay, is there anything else on this? Else on anything else?
I'm sorry, because we sort of ended that scheduled discussion a little bit abruptly, I'd like to just go back, make one request. And this is just, I think it would be helpful, that volunteer recognition reception on May 22nd. I think the more heads that think through and make sure we invite all the volunteers we have, the better. And so I think it would just be helpful to see a list of the people we know that, I mean, a written list of the groups that we're inviting, the out, you know, the outreach that we have, because some of us might think of, what about this volunteer group that did that? And, and make sure that they get included. You know, if we're going to do this, let's not, let, make anyone accidentally feel like a stepchild.
And one group I just thought of on there is the Mary Ellen Henderson Service Learning Students have been volunteering at the library, I think, no, at Cherry Hill Farmhouse, and with urban forestry, and in the senior center as well.
And I'd love to get a picture of everybody. I think it would be a very impressive, you know, because we, this community wouldn't exist without the volunteers.
Great idea. Okay, anything?
And I think if you tell people that there's going to be a big mass photograph, that... The other thing you could do with an invitation to that is invite specific groups, but then just put out a general invitation, and people could opt in if they are volunteers.
Yeah, I think that is the catch-all, but, right.
We may need to change location as planned for here.
I will confess that Celeste mentioned this to me today, so I need to get caught up a little bit more on what the plan is, because this does, I mean, when you think about how many volunteers we have, I mean, it's thousands and thousands of people. And so, I think there's, the question from here is, are we making sure we're doing this right? And, um, so-
Food will get them there, just have food.
That's right. But it might need to be a lot of food. So we will follow up and, and just make sure everybody understands what it is we're doing, what, what the program is.
Maybe we can talk about the mayor's meeting.
Yes, right.
Okay, is there anything else? Should we go ahead and head off for the west?
Let's move to adjourn.
All right, let's do it.
All right.